Please grant us a prayer and pledge. The move of prayer this morning, I would just like everyone to take a moment and pray for the families and the victims of floods in Central Texas. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first call out to the public, our rule is, a member of the public may address the board after receiving recognition from the chairperson and giving his or her name. Public comment shall be limited to a period set aside at each meeting for such purpose. Each speaker shall have the floor for no longer than five minutes and must abort grants and extension. Therefore, the rule of procedures and dialogue, 5.13-3, we also ask that you be respectful. Anyone like to address the board at this time?
Good morning. My name is George Allen and I live in the city of Hillsdale, Ward 4, with my wife and three children. I am speaking today to once again urge you to vote against the bond issue on behalf of Lifeways. The amount of money involved, the county's current financial position, and Lifeways' increasingly uncertain future make this bond issue an absolutely unacceptable risk to our tax dollars and public services. Lifeways is free to pursue a commercial loan without the backing of the county and should not be putting the taxpayers at risk by asking that public credit be laid on the line on their behalf. Lifeways is not an apartment of the county government, it is an independent nonprofit with its own board, its own millage, its own income, and its own credit. The bond would save Lifeways just 1% of their annual budget while risking 1/16 of the county's entire general climate. Meanwhile, federal funding, which is Lifeways' primary source of income, is being dramatically slashed with consequences in Lifeways' budget still probably largely unknown or unaccounted for but accounted, but no doubt extremely damaging. At the same time, at the state level, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is moving towards opening up a contract bid process for mental health service providers that could massively undercut the monopoly that Lifeways currently holds on such services. Lifeways may be facing major restructuring and downsizing in the near future. Counting on them to be able to meet their financial obligations is clearly unwise in the present climate. Going forward with this amounts to a bailout on the part of the county government, one with very little public support and a great deal of public opposition and would be an unconscionable abuse of the public credit and public trust. Frankly, I can't see how many banks looking at this situation will want to lend such a sum on any terms to such a borrower. The banks have to know that lending to Lifeways is an increasingly risky business, that the county that's offering back their credit couldn't possibly shoulder the obligation that fell on them. The county's not good for it. Undertaking this extraordinary risk while we struggle with an overcrowded jail, unserved warrants, failing roads, neglected parks could be catastrophic. You're talking about locking the county into a decades-long financial obligation that it cannot afford on behalf of an organization whose credit cannot be relied upon. There is simply no reason to do this and a huge number of reasons not to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
Joseph Henry, 181 Rees Street. I think this whole thing was poor planning. You gave the health department free rent for 20 years. You didn't give that same option to Lifeways because you needed the building. Then you had to evict them, and that's the reason we are here today talking about this bond, because of poor planning. You're locking Lifeways into the county for another 20 years, and honestly, I think everything I've seen on, just trying to get this bond issue on the ballot, if you go ahead and you vote yes on this, we're coming after your seats.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
Can I ask questions? Do I trust the board?
We don't interact, as our rule is, is that we'll listen, but we don't interact, but we will follow up with you if you give us your name and...
Sure. My name is Mark Smith and I'm in Cambridge Township. So, I mean, my question is, is I've been, I have a very poor view of this simply because it's all from internet hearsay, and it's my understanding that you guys have gone out and you've secured some money, hand it off to Lifeways, and Lifeways is going to build a building from it. Is that basically the scheming maneuver here? And that the benefit to that is it's going to be a savings to Lifeways for interest rate. And you guys won't interact, but that's my understanding. If I'm wrong, someone correct me. So, is there a risk mitigation plan around that 15 million that have been created by this body just to mitigate any risks around that 15 million? If so, is that available for public review? I would think things like a default from Lifeways would be addressed on that risk mitigation, along with the question around, is that 15 million go all the way to building? Or does some of it potentially get siphoned off for other Lifeways projects? How would that be mitigated? How would those risks be mitigated? And is there a plan written that we can review? That's my own question.
If you would, contact me and I'll answer your questions.
Mark?
Yes.
In your role here?
Pardon me?
Your role, District 3?
I'm the chairman.
Okay, thank you.
But feel free to contact me either via email or phone number that's listed on this list.
I'll probably knock on your office at the end of this meeting.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
My name is Jean Taisin and I live in the fourth ward. My comments are addressed to you, Mr. Wiley. You are chairman of the county commissioners, and by being so, you are required to vote. You cannot abstain from voting because you are also vice chairman of the board of Lifeways. Am I correct? And so, I would think that to save yourself, because there is, I think, a deep conflict of interest here, that it's important that this issue be put as a referendum on the ballot. That gives every voting member in the county a chance to make a decision on this because it is our dollars that are at high risk, not only for my generation, but for the next generations. We keep talking about government on, government this. It's not government. That's our tax. Whenever it's government anything, that comes directly out of our pockets, no matter what the program is. So, I'm asking you, sir, that this board, this commission strongly put these in question on the ballot as a referendum so that every voter can make a decision on supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? There isn't one of the public comment at the end of the meeting.
My name is Ginger Novak and I live in Ward 4 in the city. And the way I understand this, an entity which survived off of taxes drawn from Hillsdale County taxpayer funds by the federal government is anticipating a loss of those funds due to the federal voting choice that Hillsdale County voters made in November. In order to punish us for daring to make such a choice about the use of our own money, this body of Hillsdale County citizen representatives, and believe me, I use that term loosely, has determined we need to pay more, not less. And I have no influence, which three members of this commission have proven by not even bothering to acknowledge receipt of my emails, both Doug Ingles and Brett Benzinger did, for which I am grateful. I'm not from around here. I live here now, but in the South, there's always a little saying to some situations, and this one is not a happy one. You've always settled this problem, and now it's time to ride.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Good morning. Kelly Mates, Allen Township. I just want to go back about three years, and I think my question went something like this, and I asked who owns those buildings. I say that with a great big grin on my face because I love everything that came from it, and I hope it's been worth all the work, the lies, the deceit, the mistrust, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to leave you boys with that, and then at the end of this, I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work. I sat down at the fairgrounds, I watched a lady have no clue who she was, but she was a mover and a shaker, and I guess if anybody wanted to be like somebody, I might have wanted to be just like her. She was down there, and she was moving petitions, doing what she thought she should do, and if people are going to be at this fairgrounds, which is in our area, on Family Day, I think you guys should set out rules and better guidelines to people that maybe rented or are there to do whatever they're there to do. I think we need a clear understanding so people aren't misinformed and misunderstood. And because we all know what comes from that, something called, I think, repercussion, right? I'm a great example of that. Been arrested twice for my First Amendment right, et cetera, et cetera, all for pretty much asking who owns those buildings. Because let's remember, I worked there 30 years. I know. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address?
My name is Mary Minz and I live in Somerset Township. And I have presented a lot of things to this board, and I have listened while Lifeways representatives and the board talks about how Lifeways is not a bad risk. They've never defaulted on anything. I'd like for this board then to answer why in 2012, they had over $3 million deficit, and both Hillsdale County and Jackson County had to increase the amount that we gave to Lifeways, and it was just paid off in 2024. So, I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about because it just got paid off. We started the payments in 2015 and took 10 years to pay it off. So, it's not that they have not had problems before. So, with the economy and things going as they are, I believe that's a real problem that should be addressed. And I would also like to know when this board is going to address the questions I had regarding the members of the Board of Directors. As I said before, I have gotten the resolution from the original appointment of Lifeways as the mental health authority, and two of the seats are reserved for commissioners. So, why is Kathy Schmitz still on the board? Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the board at this time? And no one else?
Good morning.
All right, Bob?
You did okay last time, Mark, on the issuance of the debt that Montefiore, the aquifer issued that had been going on. And I think it needs to be kind of broad stating about whether or not they're going to sell that stuff down there, and whether or not the transfer or the permit need to be looked at. And I think that was what my main goal was, to find out about that. But thanks for commenting on it. The other is, I'm all in support of what you folks are doing for trying to get this bond issue, you know, ultimately changed. The other is, since I've never gotten any response from our study with the sheriff to the prosecuting attorney, then Mr. Brady, my two antique cars are still missing, has nothing to do with any of them, the fact that I make the report, and I don't think what Mr. Scotty Hotshere could possibly do, I don't think you'd mind a, you know, third grader's ball. I mean, it seems like the investigation is never going to be ending, and so I think his lack there is no different than what the previous undersheriff that was there has the same kind of qualities. But I think, have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
My name is Christina Brenz. I'm a resident of Hillsdale County. I am here today addressing you all directly for the third time, urging you to vote no on the $15.5 million bond for a new mental health facility. I have had the privilege of working with the group Citizens for Hillsdale County this past month, a grassroots operation started by a handful of busy parents who have little to no background in political action committees or referendums of any kind. The task at hand, 10% of registered voter signatures on paper petitions, was a massive undertaking given the short 45-day window. I personally spoke with hundreds of people regarding this bond issue. The people who signed the petition came from all areas of the county and had varying opinions both for and against Lifeways as a corporation. However, every single person was unified in the sentiment that the bond should not be issued by the county. The people's response to learning about this issue was overwhelmingly identical. Firstly, how did we not know about this? And second, absolutely this bond issuance is disastrous financial suicide on the part of the county. Addressing the first point, that people were shocked and frustrated that such a large bond was being decided on by the county commissioners without public awareness. I was happy to give the names of the three county commissioners who have voted yes thus far to move the bond forward, Brett Leininger, Kevin Collins, and Mark Wiley, especially to members in your respective districts. These voters are aware that you have your final vote on the bond today and I'm sure will be taking notes. To the second point, that the bond issuance is utter fiscal recklessness on the part of the three commissioners who have thus far voted yes. There is overwhelming vehement opposition to the issuance of the bond by the county from the thousands of people that were made aware of this issue. The people of Hillsdale County, whether you are choosing to listen to us or not, are overwhelmingly presenting you with the opposition to this bond. Why have you three continuously voted yes on this issue, staunchly turning a deaf ear to our pleas? The best I can assume is that the powers above with whom you are rubbing shoulders matter more to you than those that voted you in as public servants. To be clear, your vote at hand is not a decision on if Lifeways will continue to operate in Hillsdale, as much as those bust in from Jackson County so desperately want the public to believe. Your vote is over issuing a bond, a financial decision, one that puts our county on the hook for a $15.5 million new mental health facility. With the recent information coming in regarding 26% cuts to Medicaid, of which Lifeways receives over 90% of their funding, and the state restructuring of mental health contracts, now is not the time to be trying your hand at entrepreneurial banking. I stand here a third and final time begging you to vote no and protect our county from financial ruin from this massive liability.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Hey there, I'm Josh Wechter. I live, I'm off of West Bacon Street here in Hillsdale City. So, I'm here to address the board today on the subject of the Lifeways building bond.
What is your name again?
Joshua Wechter. It's W-A-E-C-H-T-E-R.
Thank you.
So, owing to changes in federal and state funding over the next year, as has been mentioned by several other people, I believe that placing the full faith and credit of the county behind Lifeways would be a fiscally irresponsible move, and that could lead to total and complete disaster for the county should Lifeways be forced to default. And my understanding is that Commissioner Collins explicitly said on the record that he was not going to vote for this measure if it would prove that would be financially damaging to the county, and I think, given what's come out in what the last several weeks now about cuts on the federal level and state restructuring, that seems obvious that this is going to be the case. So, I would urge you, sir, to change your vote today and listen to your constituents. Over 2,000 of whom signed a petition to put this on the ballot in order to be able to vote it down instead of two of your colleagues on the board to continue to persist in pursuing this reckless financial gambling. We're a small county with limited resources, we have crumbling infrastructure, so now is not the time to jeopardize our financial position by pledging 20-year financial backing to a non-government agency that's going to put county taxpayers at risk for an entire generation. If Lifeways defaults, the effect of your decision in practice will be that sons will have to pay for the stupidity of their fathers. All of this risk is being incurred, as I understand it, so that Lifeways can secure a loan at a more advantageous interest rate. That's it. They're going to build the building regardless. So, my question then is, why should we voters care if they get a more advantageous interest rate? Why is that our concern? You and your fellow commissioners were likely to represent the interests of county residents and secure their welfare, not secure the financial backing for a private organization. The whole situation is not democratic, and frankly, it reeks of government favoritism, especially from you, Commissioner Wiley, since you still own the board of directors. And if you had any sense of responsibility to your constituents, you would at the bare minimum have abstained from voting on this, and yet you have been the main person to push it through. Frankly, this commission's, the whole commission's assistance on strenuously advocating for putting limited kind of resources at the disposal of an outside organization is appalling. You were not elected to fund Lifeways pet projects, yet you have done this repeatedly, and you've neglected to fulfill your duty to fund desperately needed public infrastructure. Thanks to you, Hillsdale County has an overcrowded jail, leading to unserved warrants owing to lack of space, and consequently violent felons who should be walked up, walking our streets free. And a year ago, as you well know, one of those violent felons shot and killed Deputy Butler, the first deputy in Hillsdale County killed in nearly a century, and the truth of the matter is, is that your policies created that situation. That's the truth. And to make matters worse, my understanding is that you've now cut health benefits for our other deputies by giving them worse coverage with higher premiums and deductibles. And now to top it all off, you're willing to put even their salaries at risk because if Lifeways defaults, the payment of that debt has to come out of the county's general fund. So, I'd like to end with this. I understand that a lot of people signed this petition, thousands of people signed this petition. Urging you not to force this issue through in the face of what's been overwhelming public opposition. The public record from the last several meetings on this issue reflects that. So, that's two, over 2,000 voters who are going to take action in the next election cycle if you continue to lightly dismiss their concerns and act as though you're an executive committee that has no responsibility to the people. So, I think you should think a lot about that before you pass your votes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
Matthew Battling, Hillsdale. Congratulations, you have a way out. The cut all funding, this ought to be an easy vote now, so do the right thing, save face, and save our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Parker Helmburg. I live in Hillsdale. One of my issues is that we ought not simply just trust that because bureaucracy or because an organization says they set out to do something, that they are necessarily going to achieve it. We need to be able to hold them accountable, and what I see this bond measure doing is removing our ability to hold them accountable. What if we judge that Lifeways is not actually doing a good job in doing what they set out to do? We could ideally then turn to somebody else and give them a chance to do it better. But with this bond measure, we are essentially locking ourselves into a decades-long relationship with this organization that severely limits our ability to pursue other options in case this isn't working very well. So, that's why I would urge you to vote no respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
How's it going? So, knowing you guys, you're going to vote yes today, and I'm really looking forward to it because what you've done is managed to unite the county finally against you, and I'm really looking forward to the recalls that are going to be coming when you vote yes. So, thank you for voting yes.
Anyone else?
Good morning. We voted this down twice. The question remains, why did it come back a third time? What's the underlying motive for bringing it back a third time? Got to be something here that we're not seeing, and I don't know what that would be, but there's got to be an underlying motive here. And I have one other question. How did the petition results make the seven o'clock news this morning when it was just turned in last night, four o'clock? How did it make the seven o'clock news this morning so bright noon? Well, I encourage you, think about this, because if Lifeways, if Human Services is going to a bid to continue their funding, that means pretty much all the human services entities are going to lose their funding, and they got to start from scratch, so they got to bid for their money. Lifeways might not win a bid at all. They might not even be Lifeways by the end of all this when it all shakes out. So, then there we are, standing there holding the bag, $15.5 million, and Lifeways is nonexistent. You can't say that can't happen because that could happen very easily. Thank you. And remember, we did vote this down twice. Why did it come back a third time? Why? What's the underlying issue?
Anyone else wish to address at this point? All right, moving on.
Good morning. Top of the belt, Hillsdale Township. I'm not going to make any claims of eloquence, but I can say ditto to some of my friends and relatives who have made their comments relative to the Lifeways bond issue. The timing is not appropriate. You all know that. It was voted on twice and refused, and something changed, and the third time it passed. So, votes and opinions can change, facts change, circumstances change, and one circumstance that has changed is the relative certainty of repayment at this time. And I think to be fiscally responsible, you folks need to consider that very seriously, not whether or not we like Lifeways, don't like Lifeways, agree with their projects. None of that matters. It's our fiscal responsibility that matters, and there are many more pressing issues in this county that need your time and your effort and our time and our effort. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Maybe there was a lady over here.
Oh, I'm waiting to go last.
She's waving hands, so I'm just trying to keep things rolling.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Bridget Palladino. I'm from the city of Hillsdale. Lou Buck is my representative. I am here again today, came in May, to express my concern about the Lifeways bond. I have many reasons for concern for this bond. First of all, the first one is, the federal government plans to commit, to cut 26% of DHHS's funding next year, which will severely impact Lifeways, and it does not bode well for Lifeways' ability to pay, to meet its payments regarding this bond, which does not bode well for the county in turn. And $15.5 million, the amount of the bond, is about the county's annual budget, as you know. If Lifeways defaulted, which it would appear that could happen with the federal cuts to DHHS, the county would be horribly crippled. As a 10-plus-year resident of the county, I love this county. This is horrible. This is bad news. Lifeways has admitted to being able to find other financing in the past. Why? Why, and the difference between that, most likely that other financing and a county bond, that's a low risk, or sorry, low reward for high risk to the county. This is financially irresponsible for the county, if you vote yes on this. Lifeways principles also concerning. I, like others, about in 2020, saw what Lifeways was posting on Facebook about pro-LGBTQ values. And since they deleted those, why would they delete them? I've heard it's because they've received a grant from the government to post these things and to host different events. This is, but what does that say about the principles of this, of this organization? They're going to take money and they're going to do whatever they need to, to get money from the government? This is, that's ridiculous. They, this, this organization clearly does not have values, principles, and that is alarming to me. Of course, when they're asking for money from the county, they look the other way. We no longer have those values that we are, we are posting about in 2020. Not good, not good. Lastly, and most importantly, when I was here in May, I urged you to, to consider what a bond is. And many of the commissioners here were not even willing to say that a bond that the county would issue Lifeways, that the county would be held liable. That's very, very concerning for me, that my commissioners who are voting on this at one point didn't even know what a bond were, was, or was willing to be deceitful about what a bond is and how that would affect the county. It's very concerning. Lastly, Commissioner Collins, there's Commissioner Collins, right here. Sorry, thank you. During the meeting in May, that I attended the public commentary, when all of you voted to consult bond, about bond council, you committed to a no vote, Commissioner Collins, if it was found during bond council that, if the county would be held liable in the case of Lifeways defaulting on any of their payments. So Commissioner Collins, I urge you to vote no today, to hold to your word, considering that a bond the county would issue holds the county liable. And then, the taxpayers. I love Hillsdale County, I love the city of Hillsdale. I made my home here with my husband, my two children. This is a 20-year bond that would affect my children and potentially any grandchildren. It's very, very concerning. So please, vote in favor of the county, vote in favor of the citizens, the county, the city. Thank you so much, have a good day.
Other comments?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ashley Rusher. I live in District Two. Over the last 45 days, I have been working with citizens from Hillsdale County. This is, as previously stated, a grassroots organization. Most of us didn't even know each other before we started this. And over the last 45 days, have united with not only all of the voices you've heard here, the countless emails you've received, and the over 2,000 signatures, 2,000, 4,080 signatures from people in this county that want this to go to the bond, or the ballot, so that we have a choice in this as well. You have, Mr. Laniger, has said it's fiscally irresponsible to spend $100,000 on a general or on a special election for people to give their voices. But it's not fiscally irresponsible to issue a $15.5 million bond to a company that just announced a 26% decrease in available funding and is looking at restructuring, when they are even admitting themselves they're nervous about the future. Is this really a wise idea to enter into this? And Mr. Wiley, you have recently said via email, the county's not going to be responsible for the payments on the bond, when asked where the money will come from to make this. So which I don't understand, when it's been obvious through the bond council and everything else, the county will be responsible for this. I don't understand why the two of you, and Mr. Collins included, seems to think that we do not, you don't have to ask the people, you don't owe us anything, and that we shouldn't have to stay in a decision that affects our county so greatly. Please, I am urging you to listen to your constituents, because these signatures were gathered with a group that didn't know each other in the beginning and organized in 45 days. If we can't get almost 2,500 signatures in 45 days with an unorganized group of people, imagine what we can do in 60 days with a highly motivated, highly organized group of people. Thank you.
Further comments? Anyone else wish to address for? Morning, Mr.?
Morning, Jake Fransworth. Yeah, I'm sure you've heard many arguments and oppositions this morning. I just have two requests. The first, that you please vote against the issuance of the bond. And the second, specifically for Commissioners Wiley, Collins, and Laniger, that you choose on. If you choose to vote for it, for the first time that I've seen at least, please offer an explanation for why you're deciding to do so. I have yet to hear that. I would like to hear, and I believe that people would like to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I do. We've received email. Go ahead, please. No. Hi, guys. Jim Graves, Adams Township, and I appreciate the people that are here today. I appreciate the prepared comments. I don't have any prepared comments, but I concur with everything I've heard here today and what I've studied on this issue. And I simply, to the people who would need, commissioners that would be in support of this, I ask and I plead that you reconsider and that you reject this, and that you vote no, please. And many of you here I've known for years and consider friends, and I just plead that. I ask you to do that. Thank you.
And Jim? Anyone else? Do you have a comment?
Yes, we've received emails asking if we read in public comment. Is that something that Chairman will do?
The advice that I got previously on that issue, if they were directed to a specific commissioner, they would be read into the record. I did not see any that were directed to a specific commissioner. The one that Brent read in the record at the meeting that you're referring to was addressed specifically to him and asked to be read. And that, the advice that I had gotten at that time was, was what I just stated. If you have one that was directed specifically to you, then please read it in the record.
I would say all of you are commissioners, and that's rather specific.
Yeah, it's directed to the board, not to the chair.
Especially when you announced at that meeting that anybody who wanted it read in the record just has to send it in and ask for it to be read in the record, you didn't say it addressed just to one.
And I know for a fact there were several emails that were sent in in regards to this issue.
And I remember asking you for a summary out there.
We need to maintain order, please.
You need to maintain order.
Do you have a couple, if you have a couple that were from your district that you want to read in the record, please do so.
Dear county commissioners, I request that my email be read as part of public comment and recorded in the meeting as public record. Please vote no on the Lifeways bond. It is unnecessary financial risk for Hillsdale County Lifeways can obtain a private loan. No one is given the right access to mental health if they obtain a private loan, and our county avoids financial risk if the bond is called in. Since NVHHS has lost 30% of their funding since your last vote, and since Lifeways receives substantial funding through NVHHS, the risk of the bond being called in is becoming a reality. Can I ask you to picture yourself instead, something like a community pool, a splash pad, something anybody with a community can use? Cold water is the nearest outdoor public pool. Public amenities in Hillsdale would draw business to the area. Sandy Beach at Lake Wabiis is already crowded. Not everyone can or wants to swim in the lake. When an opportunity to build a community around being outside, exercising and spending time with friends and neighbors, if money is called in, any invasion in our county would be on hold for 20 years. Pay taxes at a federal level already for Lifeways' budget. Please don't make us take the risk of paying them twice for a bond at the county level. Please don't impoverish our county, don't run the risk of paying $15 million, it's unnecessary and imprudent. Don't take the risk, please vote no. Our community deserves better. From Hillsdale City Legislature resident Catherine Timas. I have another directly to me. Commissioner Ingles, in advance of tomorrow's meeting to decide on the $15.5 million building bond for Lifeways, I'm ready to express some of my concerns and urge you to vote against issuing bond. Going to changes in federal or possibly state funding over the next year, I believe that placing a full faith and credit of the county behind Lifeways would be fiscally irresponsible move that could lead to total and complete disaster for the county. And should Lifeways be forced to default, my wife has spent her career working in fundraising and development, so I'm very aware of how precarious funding is for nonprofit organizations, even those as large as and well-established as Lifeways. We're a small county with limited financial resources and crumbling infrastructure. Now is not the time to jeopardize our financial position by pledging multi-year financial backing to a non-government agency. I do not know enough about the inner workings of Lifeways to comment on how effectively they carry out their mission. But I do think it's wrong for the county to lock itself into a 20-year agreement with this organization, thus precluding the possibility of contracting with an alternative mental wellness provider should one merge. Impairs this bond will force the county to do a long-term relationship with Lifeways, limiting the decision-making flexibility of future voters and commissioners. Furthermore, puts contact pair at risk of having impaired this immense financial liability for an entire generation. All of this risk is being incurred, as I understand it, so that Lifeways can secure a loan in a more advantageous interest rate. Our response is, who cares? Such a situation is not democratic and reeks of government favoritism. You and your fellow commissioners were elected to represent the interests of your voters and secure welfare of this county's residents, not the financial soundness of a private organization. It's especially telling that if Lifeways defaults, the county will be forced to pay out its general fund, thus putting our first responders at risk. We need to protect county employees who serve and protect our citizens, not employees of Lifeways. I'd like to end by thanking for your vocal opposition to this extremely irresponsible proposal, and urge you to do your utmost at tomorrow's meeting to prevent this bond from being approved. Sincerely, Joshua Wector.
What was the last name?
Wector, W-A-E-C-H-T-E-R. I have another directly to me. Dear Doug, thank you for respecting the will of Hillsdale citizens and protecting our financial interests. Michael Jordan, A.S.C., Hillsdale. Those are the ones directed to me and from my district. I have others that have asked to be read, directed to all of us, so.
Chairman, have the comments from the commissioners at this time? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner, I would like to pull item 4.4 off and put underneath your report if we can.
4.4?
I'll support that.
Any other additions or corrections to a... All in favor of the same sign, same aye?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. For his pen, this is against the county, not for his pen. Regular agenda, I stand in motion.
Commissioner Bennett, with the addition of that 4.4 under your report, I would also like to add a closed session as the conclusion of your report for strategy connected to collective bargaining agreement. And if we can, because we have a bond council on who has, does have another meeting to go to, if we can pick up item 10.2 here right after we approve the agenda, it will be appreciated to the bond council. Commissioner, that's okay then. Just put that one in front of you and then from that to drop my report. Otherwise, with the commission.
All right, so the two changes I'm hearing is a closed session at the end of my report for purposes of contract negotiation discussion, and moving item 10.2 in front of Commissioner Ingles' report. Is there any further discussion or further changes? I'll support it, just so we can keep it moving. Is there further discussion on the changes? All in favor of the regular agenda has, and it's signify the same aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Regular agenda is approved. Mr. Laniger, you have the floor.
Right, well, we have, in our package resolution, 25-095, because of the length, I am not going to read the entire resolution.
Twenty-five pages?
Well, the actual resolution is not completely that long because of the appendix, it's 11 pages, Commissioner. I do have a flag change to propose to that resolution, and it's in paragraph number three on page two. And Mr. Day and I emailed you, I believe, a copy of that. I do have a copy of that revised resolution.
Can you say it again, please?
It's on page two, item number three, issuance of bond. And, and there will be, we'll propose adding an additional link to this, and, often to the effect. At the time of sale, provided however that the principal sum determined by the authorized officer, excluding any premium paid by purchaser of the bonds, shall not exceed 80% of the cost of the improvements as described in this paragraph. And that is inserted there after the time of sale and the next paragraph. And so with that, my vote, I will move for the adoption of resolution 25-095.
Or? What's that?
Sorry. It's not being amended, it's being presented with that change.
Correct.
Correct.
You had any...
Yes, Commissioner, I will.
That is just, basically, that was just sent to us and basically that's requiring a 20% down.
20%, that's right.
Eric? Can you hear us all right, Eric?
Can you hear me, Eric?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear Eric? So if you have any questions, this resolution was prepared by...
Eric, just a quick question for you underneath the Act 34 that were...
Eric, give me a moment where you underneath the Act 34.
As I read the statute, Eric, the only way to put this funding mechanism before the voters is with the 10% signature. The board of commissioners cannot vote to put this on a ballot because there's no tax levy associated with it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm trying to hear your question for your people, please.
So, as I read Act 34, the only way that this bonding issue could be placed before the voters is with the petition signatures of 10% of the public. We as the board of commissioners cannot vote as a body to put it before the citizens...
All right, the Act 34 funding mechanism.
Under Act 34, in order to acquire authority to issue bond on the county has to publish notice of intent, publish a notice of intent that, in order to place inside the newspaper, it starts at 45 after a referendum period. If that referendum period expires without receiving a petition, required to be signatures, then the county at one can proceed to issue bonds. Yes, the, it's... So, the answer is, it's not really, it's not a mechanism to offer voted bonds for consideration by the public out of ballot that in election. The state of Michigan has other statutory procedures for calling an election and putting forth the bond proposition to the ballot by the board of commissioners, any local unit.
So may I ask the follow-up question? So, Eric, to that, we do not have the ability under Act 34, but are there other statutes that would allow the county board of commissioners to place an issue for issuing general obligation tax bonds for the voters and giving them the ability to vote on that? Thank you.
I'm wondering if he's hearing the question and forgetting the answer to the question that's being asked.
Eric, did you hear a connection about...
Eric, we have quite a few public here today, but I talked to you Thursday as far as proceeding with this resolution. Would it be possible for you to encapsulate that, or to encapsulate the key points that you and I talked about?
Well, if you have a specific question, the answer, or you think that would be probable to address that.
I guess my, my one question that you and I talked about was that passing this today does not necessarily automatically issue the bond. We simply are taking the next step and the issuance or the sale of the bonds could be done later if it was still deemed feasible.
That's correct. The doctrine of the resolution that is before you today does not obligate the county to issue bonds. It establishes the parameters within which bond may be issued if market sale conditions allow. The decision whether the county will go forward with the bond sale will ultimately be approved by an authorized officer as explained in the resolution in conference table with me and the county's registered municipal advisor.
I have other questions from the commissioners.
Well, a follow-up on that is if this particular resolution does not obligate to issue, does that mean that you're intending for the board of commissioners to address this again? Will it come to the board of commissioners after today if this is approved?
Are you asking me or asking them?
I'm asking you.
I would say the short answer is yes.
I would say, but I would also say that statistically, according to the bond resolution, it would not have to come back before the course of time.
So in fact, this is an obligation to issue?
No, it's not an obligation to issue. It doesn't say you shall issue the bond.
It's an authorization.
It's an authorization to issue if markets factors justify the issuance.
Potentially what might that cause the issuance of the bond?
Potentially increase in interest rate. Potentially Lifeways making a determination that maybe this is not the best plan to make at this point in time.
Or potentially a change in revenue stream?
That could potentially make, provide Lifeways that decision that this may not be the best course to proceed at this point in time. That could be many factors changing revenue, which again, nobody knows exactly yet how the actions taken at the federal government or the actions that may be taken by the state government are going to affect Lifeways and their overall revenue.
So it sounds like the determination of obligation from this body, if it's approved, moves it forward and the factors outside of its body stop the bus. How would this body stop the bus if it's approved today?
Commissioner, if the bonds were not issued, if the issue was passed, one of the commissioners who voted in favor of that could run that back for reconsideration.
Wow.
Further discussion, again. Any more questions for Eric?
Mr. Jeff. So I would like to propose an amendment to the resolution that simply replacing it with that the Hilltop County Board of Commissioners places before the electorate at the August 2026 primary election, the question of should the county issue its limited tax obligation bonds for the purpose in the amount of $15 million, $500,000 for the purpose of construction, constructing a community mental health facility.
I support.
And to that, just simply, I think that we have seen the overwhelming outpouring of opposition to this question. I think that we have seen before us in excess of 2,000 citizens of the county who have placed their names on petitions, and I think that we owe them the opportunity to check in on this. There are five of us, and I understand that we are elected by each of our districts. I understand that we all have strong opinions in regards to this, but I think that this is bigger than the five of us. I think that this is a very, very important question. Lifeways can continue onward and obtain a commercial loan, and should the voters vote to issue these bonds for that purpose, that commercial loan can be repaid from those proceeds. The county can take ownership of that building and just as we did with Senior Center for the period of time to satisfy them. But I do think that this is important enough that would give the citizens the opportunity to check in on this. I am sorry, I don't have a reading, I just took it, I appreciate it.
Where are you inserting that?
I'm just simply replacing, replacing the entire resolution.
Okay.
Could you repeat it one more time, please?
The Hilltop County Board of Commissioners place before the electorate at the August 2026 primary election, the question of should the county of Hillsdale issue its limited tax general obligation bond in an amount not to exceed $15 million, $500,000 for the purpose of constructing a community mental health facility.
Eric, you have your hand raised and commissioners, our council must have another meeting that they need to get to as well.
Yeah, I believe the motion was to put the question, the proposed question on the August election.
August of 26.
Of 26. So a year from now.
Hold on, Mr. Jeff. Thank you.
No, it's too short to get it out of the size. I understand.
Eric, do you need to go over your own theme?
I do, but I want to make sure that you all have had all your questions answered about the bond resolution.
Any more further questions for Eric? I think we're good, Eric. We'll let you get going to your other meeting. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Reverend.
All right, is there further discussion on, basically a proposed substitute?
Right?
Yes.
To put it on the ballot of the 2026 election? Is there further discussion?
So, in general, my comment is Hillsdale County is responsible for payment of the loan from existing general fund dependent on payment services by Lifeways or from other department budgets all in part if there is a shortfall by Lifeways. The loan is a 30-year commitment at a time when there are too many future restructuring and funding questions. Is that being responsible if Sharon Hillsdale County is liable and the people should vote?
Basically... Any other comments on the proposed substitute? Your call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Lanier?
No.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
All right, we'll continue on with Doug's report.
No, Commissioner, that was on an amendment.
Yeah, that's correct. Point of order, thank you. So we still have the resolution 25... 25-095. So is there further discussion on 25-095? Has a mind. No further discussion, your call.
If I will, Commissioner. I would like to point out, we heard many people say that this item was voted on 3% before it was voted down many times. That's not true. The only time we voted on this prior to January 1st was in November of 2024. That's the only time it was voted on. Commissioner Ingles will refresh himself on April 9th of 2024. He offered a motion that Lifeways would build a new building and the county would secure the funding for that, and he voted for that at that point in time. In February of 20, I believe February and March of 2024, Mary Beth Leonard, Lifeways was here, made a presentation to the board, and we asked for more information. We never voted on the bond issuance at that point in time. So everybody who's been saying that this has been voted on before multiple times, they're not correct, it was voted on once. Additionally, many times in the legislative process, you can go to Lansing, you can go to Washington, D.C., bills are introduced in a session, they die at the end of the session and are reintroduced in the next legislative session. Same thing happens here. Understand, you know, we had six, I believe... I understand, you know, we had six, I believe, six point six percent of the registered voters potentially of the county signed a petition. We're not sure on that because the 2,400 number that was submitted, we don't know that all of those were valid signatures. But that's based on the registered voters of six point six percent. I am concerned as to, you know, Commissioner Engels is going to talk about a building license on that for a building that Life Ways has already paid for, it's a loan by the county, but Life Ways paid for. And now we're going to only offer them a year and a little bit of time to vacate that building, and there's no plans for where they're going to go. To me, we need to make the decision and move forward with the issuance of the bonds as the resolution offer.
It has, it's already been stated. The resolution could pass because of interest rates or because of multitude factors.
As many commissioners, if we, that's the resolution we're going to put issue on the August 11th. That's the current resolution.
Right. Because it's as amended. Could be amended past three or two. But it all, built into the resolution is the factor that the sale of the bonds cannot, is only.
That is not the resolution.
What?
The resolution before us is, shall we place the issue before the voters? All of the rest of the language is now gone. We amended the resolution.
Correct, so we're voting on it as amended.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the resolution is to put it on the ballot so that the people can vote.
Further discussion?
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Langer?
No.
Mr. Engels?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
All right, please. Doug, your report, please.
Thank you, I'll take my action item.